I think we have lost the chairwoman. I have reached out to her. Find out what has happened. Okay, it appears that she does not see anyone or hear anyone. So I'm going to ask IT to reach out to her. Okay. Everyone hold tight. For those who have just joined us, we're having a little computer issues with the chairwoman. So IT hopefully is in touch with her to get this resolved. Okay, they're reaching out to her. So everybody just hang tight.
Chris, can you hear me?
Okay, IT has connected with her and is on the phone with her now. So hopefully she'll join us in a few minutes here.
Hey, Jen. Jen, Friday, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Is there some reason we can't proceed since we have a quorum and the vice chair is here?
There is no reason why you couldn't do that, why you couldn't proceed with the chair resigning over the meeting.
Well, I'll leave it to the vice chair, but it seems to me that.
It's really the will of the vice chair in the committee.
I'm willing to move forward if everyone else is.
That's right, we am.
Yeah, I think out of respect to everyone's time, that would be good.
Okay, okay, let's, I don't have the sheets in front of me, so I wasn't prepared for this, but I just got home. So do we need to say what we normally say on these committee meetings?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay, do we need to take roll first?
Yes, you want to call the meeting to order and then call the roll.
Okay, I call this committee to hold to order. Madam clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Days, councilmember Dunaway.
Present.
Councilmember Fitch.
Here.
Councilmember Webb. Councilmember Clancy.
Here.
Councilmember Trachis.
Present.
Councilmember Harder.
Present.
Mr. Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. We take into consideration all things that need to be considered in this meeting. I don't have the script in front of me, so you want to read that, Diane?
Yes, the committee takes official notice of and admits into evidence all St. Louis County ordinances and resolutions.
Okay, we're here today to look at the nominations for various committees and commissions and the Health Department, the nominations of the county executive and to discuss those situations. Is there an order that we need was set up, you know?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We had Dr. Khan going first and then Dr. Beth Hubner, then Mr. Brian Ashworth, and followed by Bishop Lawrence Wu. Those are the four for today.
Okay, with that said, let's move to the first candidate, which is Dr. Faisal Khan. And it's for the position of Director of the Health Department. And open it up for questions. Anyone want to be the first to ask Dr. Khan questions about his appointment? Anybody? Councilman Fitch.
I'll go first, not shy. Dr. Khan, thank you for joining us today. Can you maybe get us started a little bit about your, I mean, some of us know your background a little bit. What kind of doctor are you? You are PhD. Are you a medical doctor? Can you give us some background?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. I trained as a physician in Pakistan and a medical graduate. Following my medical degree, I completed the masters in public health in Australia and then worked for a few years in public health in Vietnam and South Africa before migrating to the United States with my wife in 1990. And so I am a physician, yes, but I'm not in clinical practice or licensed to practice medicine in the United States.
Okay, so the doctor that when we refer to you as a doctor is from your education in overseas, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, just want to make sure I had that right. One of my primary concerns is questions, really not concern. In 2018, when you left the Department of Health, you resigned, I think your letter said October 1st of 2018. The post dispatched said Khan said the council forced him to trim $8 million from the Health Department budget, hold up contracts for being executed and stymied business operations. So you resigned as a result of that. Now, Sam Page was the council chair at the time you resigned, is that right?
I believe so.
So you resigned under, I would say, basically what your information was because of the cuts to your budget from the county council. So what brings you back? Why would you come back under being asked by Sam Page to come back? Why would you come back knowing that?
Well, sir, for one thing, the pandemic sort of put aid to any plans that we had to relocate my family. And so my wife and children were in St. Louis and I was commuting back and forth every week from Kansas City. That can take a heavy toll on a young family in particular. The second issue, which is of professional importance, is this is a once in a century, a once in a lifetime public health emergency. And so if you've trained all your life for a public health event, an emergency, a situation such as this, when it arrives, you find yourself stranded 250 miles away from the scene of battle in your hometown. It's somewhat disconcerting as a public health professional. So it just so transpired that the position was vacant. I happened to speak with Dr. Page at a social event and he inquired politely about my interest in wanting to come back to St. Louis. And that's how it came about.
Okay, and I appreciate that background. So you don't have a concern anymore about cuts to budgets or anything like that that you had in 2018? You've, that's been alleviated or is the county executive promised you that's not going to happen? So what makes you think it won't be the same again, to my point?
Absolutely, sir. That may very well happen again. But more to your point, sir, the circumstances in 2018 were of a different mix. It was a circumstance in which I could not get the business of providing public health services by putting in place the contracts necessary to deliver those services as a result of the ongoing tension at the time between the office of the county executive and the county council. And while some of that, in fact, a large part of that is just the background symphony to a healthy democracy, you know, that's pretty normal. At the time, things had come to a point where communication had broken down. I was being prohibited from communicating with the council in any form or manner. And so it brought together a very toxic mix of circumstances. I was unable to look my public health colleagues here at my department in the eyes and, you know, tell them, listen, I cannot get this done as a result of which service X, Y, and Z will not be delivered in the forthcoming week. So that was the frustration behind it. As far as budgetary considerations, you know, cuts are a part of life. We always try to save every penny and there may well be a situation in the future, near or distant, when we have to sit down and deliberate over those. I would not shy away from that.
Okay, I see the madam chair is back. I don't know if we want to interrupt and let her jump in here.
Go ahead and let me catch up, okay?
All right.
Thank you.
So Dr. Khan, you supervise how many people in the Department of Health, roughly?
Sir, my direct reports are only three or four, but overall, we have a, when I left in October 2018, we had about 600 employees. Currently, we have somewhere in the range of 720 as a result of the pandemic and all the temp staff and case investigation staff and scientific staff we've had to bring onboard.
Okay, and do you supervise Dr. Duchet and Spring Schmidt?
Yes, sir. Those are two people that report to me.
And the reason I ask that is they were the acting co-directors before you were brought in as the acting director. What has become of them since they were the acting co-directors? And what are they doing now under your supervision? And did they take a pay cut when they went back to whatever position they're in now?
Sir, their positions were redefined. So Dr. Duchet is the chief medical officer as well as the director of the Division of Public Care Services. So she will continue in that role. And Spring Schmidt has reverted to a redefined role as deputy director of the Department of Public Health. And because Ms. Schmidt has led the county's efforts over the last year and a half in terms of emergency response, it was important to continue that effort. So their roles substantially have not changed. It's just that I'm available now to take the lead in a lot of stuff as well as back them up and empower them to continue on their jobs.
Okay, and madam chair, I'll let the other council members ask. I do have some additional questions, but I'll let others take a turn.
That sounds good. Thank you so much. And I do apologize for the technical difficulty. I couldn't tell you what happened. So who else, who else is on the call that would like to ask a question of Dr. Khan? And Dr. Khan, let me make sure, you are a doctor, correct? You have a PhD or what is that?
Yes, thank you. As I explained to Councilman Fitch, I am a physician. I was trained in Pakistan, but I am not licensed to practice clinical medicine in the United States.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you. So we can officially call you doctor. I just did not see any of those credentials behind your name, so I just wanted to make sure. So all right, any other questions for Dr. Khan at this particular point?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Harder.
Yes, thank you. Dr. Khan, you weren't around when the pandemic started in this, in this region, in this area. And Ms. Schmidt and Dr. Duchet were the persons in charge of the response to that. Knowing what you know today, if you were here back then, what would you have done differently or the same when it comes to health orders and the response to this pandemic?
That's a very good question, sir. And I have asked myself that question as well. But I would preface my answer by telling you that hindsight is always 20/20. What we know today about the disease and the pandemic and how it has played out in different parts of the country is substantially different to what we knew eight to 12 months ago. With that in mind, perhaps the only thing that I would have overemphasized on is the communication piece with key stakeholders in the community and take the approach off involving business leaders down to, you know, small business leaders, restaurant owners, et cetera. And that's not to say that there wasn't that consultative process, but I would emphasize that to the maximum extent possible. Because one thing that became clear as the pandemic rolled on, and certainly by the end of 2020, was that we were fighting a battle of narrative where there was a disconnect between us reaching out to people and trying to provide explanations and their willingness to receive it because they had information gaps, they had not been spoken with or had the opportunity to sit down and have their fears allayed or reassurances provided. That seems to have been a national weakness. I have no hesitation in telling you that as a public health professional, I view this as a weakness across our national system. I don't think the CDC has done a good enough job at communication as evidenced yesterday when we received only a 30-minute notice before the announcement was made. So that creates confusion, consternation, and endless speculation. And it gives rise to a void that should not be there to begin with. We should have had the community outreach piece, the business outreach piece lined up well before the vaccine doses first hit the street in December 2020. And that did not happen. That was a major failing. I would have done that very differently and I would have tried to do it differently in St. Louis County to whatever extent possible.
So what would you have done the same?
I think the part about mask mandates was critical because very little was understood. We knew that masks were one of the issues that, one of the tools in our armory that prevented the spread of person-to-person infection. The public health order route was still something I would have supported. It is very much the instrument that was required at the time. I wish that the vaccine had become available a little sooner in 2020. That would have alleviated some pressure. But substantially on the scientific front or the public health front, I would not have done too much differently.
In this region, we had three counties and a city that all responded differently and all had medical professionals at the helm of these different mandates. And they all responded differently. How do we avoid that in the future and why did they respond differently and with different results? And what would you have done different?
I think, sir, based on what I know today about the way things have transpired, and I experienced the same thing on the other side of the state, by the way, in Kansas City, where five counties come together in the KC metro area. There was a lot of disconnect. There were a lot of pressures that agencies were responding to from the business sector, from the political leadership, et cetera. But at the crux of it, at the very core of it, it needed to be better coordination, unified messaging, and we failed to do that as a public health system. In the worst crisis to hit the United States in the better part of 100 years. That was a failure of our system across the country. There was a lack of national leadership. Typically, we would have looked through the state or to the CDC or to the DHSS or to HHS, beg your pardon, nationally for leadership. There was none of that coming through. So local entities were left to fend for themselves. In the St. Louis region, we were able to get together with the city. In the St. Louis region, we were able to get together with the city, Jefferson County, Franklin County, and St. Charles to try and coordinate things. But by then, the battle for the narrative had been lost. Things had been put into place that were disjointed, that were not working off the same playbook. And it became a very poorly coordinated response is how I would put it.
Who do you think is responsible for that?
I think, sir, at the national level, certainly the national agencies did not cover themselves in glory in providing leadership. And that's not to say that they lack credibility or expertise. It's just that the system necessary to get the guidance out to state and local agencies didn't exist. At the state level, I put the blame squarely in Jeff City. I think the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services was slow to respond and their messaging and leadership was somewhat confused about how to go about doing it. There was no real effort to coordinate the response statewide. And at the local level, because we were left to fend for ourselves, we only had local and regional information and data base our decisions on. So there really was no cohesive coordinated effort.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any anyone else with a question? Councilwoman Dunaway?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Khan, can you please talk a little bit about what your vision for public health in St. Louis County is post-pandemic, to the extent you can speculate?
Thank you, Councilwoman. I think we have several key priorities that we need to refocus on. The pandemic has exacerbated a lot of the inequities and health disparities that existed pre-pandemic. It has pulled back the curtain on issues pertaining to generational poverty, for example, in certain parts of the county, which have a direct link to chronic diseases and a perpetuation of a downward cycle in terms of health outcome trajectories. So we need to get back to a point where we reconnect people, men, women, and children in the St. Louis County region, back with primary care providers, bring them back into the careful so that kids can get caught up on their immunizations and well child checks. Men, women, adults can get caught up on diabetes and cardiovascular disease-related diseases. And we can begin to focus on the value of social determinants of health that continue to fester in the background. And I refer here to things such as a lack of transportation, a lack of healthy and nutritious and affordable food and an access to care piece. I would also add the fact that mental health has suffered tremendously during the pandemic. It was a crisis even before the pandemic, but it has been exacerbated tenfold by the pandemic. And I don't think we have even begun to scratch the surface of this iceberg just yet. The mental and emotional health crisis in the United States and in the St. Louis region will manifest itself in many different horrible ways in the years ahead. And we need to be prepared for that to whatever extent possible. A tangential relation to that is the spiraling opioid abuse and substance use disorder piece, which was an issue before the pandemic. It has now multiplied tenfold as our DEA colleagues or substance use therapy and treatment colleagues can testify to. So we've got a long list of issues that we need to pick up on and refocus on. I am relieved that the pandemic is beginning to take a turn for the better. I hope, fingers crossed, that trend continues so we can get back to the business of core public health services.
Thank you.
Anyone else with any questions for Dr. Khan? Okay, Councilman Fitch?
If everyone else is finished, I'll take my second round.
All right.
Dr. Khan, tell us about the animal control shelter. I didn't hear you mention that at all. That's been a sore spot as long as I've been on the council. What is your plans there to address the concerns? I heard what you said during the hearing. Do you plan to do anything different over there to address the concerns that we've all heard about over and over and over again?
Thank you, Councilman. I would begin by admitting to you, you know, if we try to keep doing the same things over and over again, it feeds into the very definition of insanity. And so you're absolutely right, sir. For as long as you have been on the council and even when you were on the force, you will remember that, you know, there have always been chronic issues. A tremendous amount of progress has been made on certain key metrics at the animal control program. The first and foremost amongst them is the live release rate, which is now amongst some of the best in the country. The euthanasia rate is one of the lowest in the country compared to national and state benchmarks. However, however, the chronic programmatic and personnel issues as well as the public relations and perceptions piece continues to be a nagging issue. And I fully empathize with all respected council members. Your phones and your emails are full of complaints and, you know, expressions of outrage. We have to do something truly transformational to get away from that because this cannot continue as is. And as I assured members of the council in the hearing the other day, we are working on a couple of options that we hope to be able to share with you in the near future. They will be hopefully transformational in a way that makes sense, that is acceptable and durable and sustainable. And that will go a long way in alleviating some of these concerns. But I would remind all honorable council members, the outrage factor associated with animal care and control has always been high, sir, as you well know. I remember one incident, sir, to illustrate the fact, back in 2014 or 13, I forget now. But a couple of young kids had abused a dog or just kicked it around and posted a Facebook video. Within a matter of hours, the police had, county PD had logged about 3,000 calls from all over the country. People were just outraged. The same evening, a young five-year-old child was badly injured in a drive-by shooting incident somewhere in, I think, the North County area. There were zero calls logged, which makes I forget. So that factor will always be there. Unfortunately, people will not look at the 500 animals that we live released or adopted out. They will still focus on the N of one, but what about Daisy? What about Duke? What about this, this cat or this animal? That equation is very difficult to untangle. I'm hopeful that with the plans that we have working, we will be able to do some out-of-the-box thinking and find a different solution, a better solution. So my commitment back to you, sir, within the next 90 days, you will see progress.
Okay, we'll hold you to that. So thank you. Can I revisit the health orders? Councilman Harder touched on. So you've issued a few health orders since you've been the director, correct?
Yes, yes.
Are there any actual health orders that are left now at this point after today? They're still
Yes, sir. Thank you. Though that's a very good question and we've clarified that for a lot of folks that have asked as well. So basically, the STL, sorry, the reopen STL order issued about a week, maybe 10 days ago, has been rescinded. However, there are some minor, what I would consider minor public health orders that are still in place, which pertain largely to quarantine. And so if you have an outbreak in a school or a congregate setting, for example, the quarantine piece, you know, 10 to 14 days of quarantine follow-up to ensure a symptom-free existence before returning to the fold, those orders will remain in place. All the orders pertaining to businesses, capacity restrictions, entertainment venues, et cetera, have been lifted.
Okay, and in that same discussion, are you familiar with the legislation that's on the governor's desk right now? That would give this council oversight authority on these orders. So let's assume he signs for sake of argument. He signs it this afternoon. Takes effect immediately. There's an emergency clause. So what is your plan with this council moving forward? Because if any of those are to survive, because they automatically expire in 30 days, right? So what is your plan to come to the council and have a conversation with us to keep things like this quarantine order in place? What's your plans?
Absolutely, sir. My hope would be to basically have a regular monthly meeting dedicated to a discussion of these orders, presenting the information in light of updated data-driven information available to us. And quite frankly, sir, the only part of the bill, I forget the number now, but that I would have some concern about that I wish they had given some thought to was the 30-day limit. And I see that from a scientific perspective because 30, 30 days worth of information is often not enough to be able to figure out which way the trend line is going. Typically, we would want the quarter's worth of information. So I wish that 30-day had been 90 days so that we could go back and say, this is what we're seeing in the first quarter or the second quarter or the third quarter. This trend is going downwards. We don't believe that we need to extend this further or request a temporary extension for 30 days or 60 days, whatever the case might be. But
Yeah, and you know, the bill also says the council can extend it for an unlimited amount of time for 30 days each time. So that fixes in there. It's just it forces you to come to the council and ask us to extend it. Which I think, you know, if there's a proper reason for doing that, why wouldn't we? It'll be refreshing to have a conversation where you're asking somebody from the Department of Health actually asking us for our thoughts to move forward. So it's a shame that we had to wait this long to get there, but that's not your, you aren't here for all that. So we're not going to tag you with that. One last thing. Speaking of public health orders, so since you've issued some of them since you've been in this position, tell me how that process works. Is this something you do all on your own? I know you get input from different pandemic task forces and all that. I get that. What role does the county executive play in the issuing of those orders? Do you discuss it with him before you issue it? Can he change it? Has he changed it? How does that process work?
No, sir. The county executive in the two and a half months that I've been here, his message to me has been very clear. You decide what you want to do. You prepare the orders. What we traditionally do is take a look at whatever data or information we need to prepare a draft of the orders, consult with the office of the county councillor to ensure that the, it does not clash with any existing law or ordinance or state regulation, et cetera. And then I proceed to sign those orders and promulgate them. We, at the same time, of course, work with our communications team and the office of the county executive and their communication to prepare talking points, et cetera, for the actual announcement. But as far as the content and the reason and the rationale for those orders, that's left to us. I have certainly not had any interference or any direction from the county executive.
Okay, I appreciate that. And one last, I did say the other one is the last, but you have two nonmerit positions assigned to you, is that correct? That are political appointees? And who currently fills those two positions?
I believe, sir, one is occupied by Katrina Oates, who works with us on coordinating COVID response, communications, et cetera, for the restaurant community, entertainment venues, et cetera. And the other one is occupied by former councilman Rochelle Walton Gray, who works on community outreach and coordination of vaccination efforts and vaccination awareness.
And do you actually supervise their work schedule? Do they give you some sort of work schedule on what they're going to be doing? What their hours that they're working? Is that your responsibility or someone else's?
That's further down the chain, sir. So there are embedded, one, Katrina, who's embedded with the Department of Administration, Division of Administration here, and Ms. Watson Gray is within health education and prevention. So they have supervisors assigned to them who have a chain of reporting that eventually comes up. But I'm not, I do not control their work schedules, et cetera.
Right, I appreciate it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions of Dr. Khan? Okay, Dr. Khan, I hope that I am not repeating anything or that you have already said before, but I did have certain several questions for you. And I wanted to start with the ACC. I know we briefly touched on that. When you were here last, were the same administrators in the ACC, the same ones that are there now?
No, ma'am. There's been a complete change.
All of those people have changed since you've been there? And that was how many years ago?
Three years ago.
Okay, three years. All right. Well, I will say that it has been probably, probably the one of the worst, I guess, examples I can say of leadership in that area. And I'm just being candid with you. There seems to be no concern for what the public is saying in that arena, which troubles me a great bit. And the fact that you cannot go out yourself and seek the kind of assistance that you need, that troubles me a lot because it seems that we're left to whoever drops in and that's who, you know, we have to hire. That's completely unacceptable for me because I'm not sure if you're aware of the various veterinary medicine schools here in this country that certainly we can pull one from. I'm not saying a whole cadre of people, but certainly we could pull one from. So that's something I hope you really look into because I think that the leadership there is not what we need at this particular point. And there is no confidence in the leader. When you don't have confidence in the leader, then your ship is just not going to sail quite well. So anyway, let's move on to this, this earlier, this council by way of resolution established that racism is a public health crisis in St. Louis County. And I need to know from you, how do you, how do you plan to address that? What, what methods do you use to address that? You did mention, and I'm glad to hear that because I mentioned that earlier about a healthcare home for every citizen in St. Louis County. They need one. Every citizen, man, woman, a child, needs to have a healthcare home. And hopefully, we can allay some of these fears and concerns that people in the community have. So would you address that, please, that the racism is a public health crisis here?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Let me say this unequivocally and directly. Institutional and structural racism is a major public health crisis. There is no shying away from it. It is something that the world of public health recognized many years ago, even before it became fashionable in the last few years to talk about it. We have struggled for want of resources to commit towards that fight because every fight requires that resources be invested in it. The tactics and the programs and the strategies required to mount a response that is sustainable, that actually makes a difference in that arena is something that public health is rather good at doing. Some of the programs that we already have in place, Project Recast, for example, is a major example. It literally turned things on its head. And for the benefit of the members of the council, I will follow up with an email to give you just a two-page primer on what Project Recast is. It was created in the wake of Ferguson as a result of Promise Zone funding that came from the federal government to address social inequities and racism-related issues that have persisted in parts of St. Louis County for many decades. The first thing it sought to address was to involve the recipients of services, the people, the men, women, and children who live in those communities in the decision-making process. So the concept was called participatory budgeting. Essentially, men, women, and children, residents, recipients of services, would sit around the table, facilitated in a group decision format by members of our staff as well as other trained mediators that we work with to decide how they wanted money to be spent to increase services and address issues such as mental health services, violence prevention, transportation, social support, after-school care, all the other things that have built up over time. As far as attitudes is concerned and public education is concerned, that is going to be a lifelong struggle. And I am sorry to be able to tell you that I am despondent about the current state of circumstances that we find ourselves in in this country. And the St. Louis region is a microcosm of that in that conversations have become increasingly polarized to the point that I see evidence of that even within the county workforce. I've only been here two and a half months. I've had one conversation in which I sent out a communication to my team across the Department of Public Health commenting on the origin of some commonly used words and idioms and phrases and how those can be misconstrued as microaggressions. We should not use We should not use words without understanding their full context and background. Lo and behold, the backlash I got from my own staff was as if I had insulted them personally by sharing that information. That saddens me profoundly because it is a reflection of what is going on in our society. So we will struggle to deal with it. And I do not have any ready answers for you other than this is going to be a struggle for my lifetime, at least.
Well, let me just say that it starts with a conversation. As you have brokered, I guess, the email or text that you sent to someone, it starts with a conversation, a real conversation about how this is happening and what is happening in the various communities. And so that's something that perhaps you can begin having conversations in, not necessarily about health, but clearly about health and healthcare and how it's related to the overall good of a community. You mentioned participatory budget, and these are fancy words that we've heard before. I have not heard, I have not seen any results of that process. And maybe it's just me, but I have not seen anything of that process. And I'm looking at the fact of communities who need that. And how do you how do you get those people in a room? You have a father with two jobs and two children, and he's trying to make, he doesn't have time to sit around a table and figure out the kinds of needs that are there. He's keeping his head above water barely. And so when you say participatory budget, it seems to me that that's looking at a group of people who perhaps already have. And then they try to figure out a system for someone else. I think that was mentioned with mental health as well. And we know the mental health crisis, as you mentioned early, it's looming, and it's going to be worse. And so that's something that we need to we need to work on. Did I hear you say that you signed the the public health orders? You can sign those?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, okay. And even though you're not necessarily licensed physician here, you can still do that?
That's the director of the department or the acting director of the department, who typically signs public health orders with the concurrence of the chief medical officer.
Okay, all right. I don't have anything else at this particular point for you. Thank you for being here. And I do apologize for the technical difficulties. I see Councilman Harder has a question. I saw his hand first, Councilwoman Clancy, so.
I just I just need to know. I don't have a question. I have to step away because I have a four o'clock meeting. So I just wanted to let you know that. But thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilman Harder?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. One last question is kind of a follow-up dealing with the ACC. When you were the Health Director under the Stanger administration, I believe for a period of time, ACC was under the Department of Administration for a while. And I think it went from health to administration and then back to health when everything was blowing up over there. What's your plans? Is that going to stay in the Health Department? Is it going to go somewhere else? Are we going to outsource the whole operation? What is your plan for ACC's future?
So, sir, let me just answer that in two parts. First, no, the program will stay within the Department of Public Health. What we will work on is trying to change the way we interact with the community and with different groups out there and try to institute models of care for animals that incorporate those interest groups in it. So volunteer training, recruitment, rescue, foster groups, et cetera. I don't want to comment on, you know, the word privatization, I know, has been thrown around rather carelessly. There and, you know, privatization to the groups that or the individuals that are accusing us of malfeasance means, oh, yeah, they're going to sell the shelter to some private group. No, that is neither possible nor doable in any form or manner. So I don't even want to touch upon that. But we have some ideas that we're working on to create a transformational change in the process and the culture for animal care and control so that we fight this persistently negative battle, this impression that somehow we don't care about animals and all we do is take people's pets and subject them to euthanasia. We certainly don't do that, sir. And you well know, you've visited the animal shelter. I would offer that opportunity to all the council members. You don't even have to get an appointment. Please drop by anytime. The staff would be glad to show you the unique challenges that they deal with on a daily basis. But as I mentioned to Councilman Fitch in his earlier question, please give us ninety days. We will have progress for you and we will report back to the council.
Do we need to be in that? Do we need to be providing that service anymore? Or is there a different model out there when it comes to running a animal shelter?
Sir, the public health code, as well as the public safety requirements, almost compel us, and justifiably so, to provide that service to people so that we protect against zoonotic disease transmission, police calls, hoarding cases, et cetera. There really is nobody else in that space doing it. The Humane Society in Missouri, for example, does hoarding pieces, but they don't necessarily have the government authority to impose investigations related to animal abuse, for example. So there is a carved-out role for us. We cannot move away from that. But we can improve the chances and the percentage of animals that are adopted out successfully to foster groups, to animal rescue groups, to individuals interested, et cetera. I will finish by saying this, sir, and I have said this before to anybody who would listen. In the St. Louis area, we have a serious pet overpopulation issue. Irresponsible pet owners who do not spay and neuter their animals are contributing to it. That is at the core of what is going on. So that's also an issue that we need to address.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Any further questions for Dr. Khan? Dr. Khan, thank you so very much for your patience today and for answering the questions that we have. If there's nothing else from the council, we will excuse you and move on to our next candidate. No further questions? All right. Thank you so very much. Right now, we have Dr. Beth Hubner, I think is next on the agenda. Dr. Huber, Huber? Is that right? Am I saying correctly?
Yes, you are. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Would you introduce yourself to the council? And we'll be prepared to ask you some questions.
Sure. I am Beth Huber. I'm a professor of criminology and criminal justice at the University of Missouri-St. Louis. And I have lived in this region and been an UML since 2003.
Okay, you will be you are being considered for the Justice Services Advisory Board. You will be replacing one of our Stallworth members there. We have had some challenges in that area. And I assume that you have you attended a meeting yet? Have you started meeting with the group yet?
I have not. We meet in two weeks, I believe, but I have met the members of the committee.
Okay, all right. So you haven't attended any meetings. And do you have any idea of what's happening at the Justice Services in terms of the advisory group right now?
Yes, I do a little bit. As I mentioned, I have chatted with all of the members of the group. But I have worked with the St. Louis County Jail since about 2015. So I have been working on the McCurkther Safety and Justice Challenge. And so that one of the goals or the goal of that project is to reduce the jail population. So before COVID, I went to the jail about once a week.
Okay, let's see if anyone, any of the council members have any questions for you. Any council members with any questions? Councilman Harder?
Yes, thank you. Ms. Huber, from what you've seen, and I'm sure you've read the newspapers and seen what's been going on at the jail in the last six months or even a year, where do you think or what do you think you can give to this committee, you know, help improve the situation at the jail as we see it today?
Sure. I mean, I think what I bring to the jail committee would be subject matter expertise. So what works other places in terms of reducing the jail population? What are best practices in terms of culture and climate of employees at the jail? So that's where I think I bring, like I said, most of my expertise in that. I've been widely in this area. All of my classes are on corrections. So, you know, all of my research has been in this area. So I can talk about what I think we see in terms of trends other places and perhaps things that we can implement in St. Louis County.
Based on your experience and your education, what would you say we are doing right and things we're doing wrong from what you know of at the jail right now?
Okay, well, I'll start with the good news. I think I think, you know, the jail population is reduced since I first started working with the group. It has since gone up. But I do think that there is a collaborative relationship between the jail director, the prosecutor, the public defender. I think the challenge with, you know, working with the jail is that the jail has no control over who is dropped off at its steps. And so and the only way to change the jail population is to work with your partner. So I think that's one of the biggest strengths. Also, there's a huge ability to look at data that was not available when I started at all. And so there's a number of people who do data and can really critically look at information in the jail. One example is the dashboard. I think the biggest challenge is also the jail population. The jail population has increased dramatically since COVID. And I don't think, I think more efforts could be taken to reduce the jail. Kind of consistent with the discussion that you had with the Health Director is also racial and active disparities. Those have always been quite large and they continue to increase. So that is one thing that I want to make sure to speak about is my role on the jail board. And then finally, I think, well, two other things in terms of population, I think length of stay. It's not just who's in the jail, but how long they stay. That's a critical point of intervention. And that's something that you saw in terms of challenges in the city. And then staffing, corrections in general in the in the region have had problems, you know, staffing at full levels. And so if the jail isn't able to get up to staffing, then I then I think we're putting ourselves in a really difficult place.
Last question is, speaking of staffing, I'm sure you steam reports and at least anecdotal information across the country in your studies. We are, last report, we have forty openings. The most or the least we've ever had was about fifteen openings. How do we close that gap? And how do we do it quickly? And what's worked across the country that maybe we haven't tried here when it comes to closing that gap?
Oh, that's a really great question. I think the, you know, the quickest way, and I know there's some talk about that, is increasing pay. So I think that's really important. But I would also encourage the, you know, the board or the region to think about other incentives as well. Not just pay, but perhaps educational incentives and opportunities for people to move up. And I think that there could be a number of ways to do that. I also think, you know, when I've been at the jail, different, you know, different ways to creatively staff the institution. So for particularly during COVID, if you think of women and their children, who are often take care, I mean, women often take care of children. Some of the rigid shifts and the way that they're set out make it different, difficult for women with children to have a job in the jail. And so I would, I would encourage the group to think about, is there flexible staffing or ways in which we can have this really be a career for a lot of different people to kind of change with our kind of emerging workforce? Many things that we do in corrections are the same things that we have done for decades and decades, but the workforce has changed. So I think there can be a discussion of different incentives and different staffing plans that will keep the jail safe, but will encourage kind of a broader workforce.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilwoman Dunaway?
I don't have a question. I just wanted to say thank you to Beth for your willingness to serve, and it's nice to see you.
Nice to see you.
Anyone else? Councilwoman Fitch? I'm sorry, Councilwoman Tricus? You're on mute. Sorry.
Ms. Huber, what's your understanding of the culture amongst the staff at the Justice Center?
That's a great question. I actually don't know a lot about the culture of the staff. I have met a number of the staff. Most of them are in leadership or in, you know, data. So I don't have any real interactions day to day with the correctional officers. But I think it's critically important to learn about like the culture and working climate of the jail. That's something I'm working on with the Missouri Department of Corrections in terms of their prisons. And so I think that, you know, learning about the needs of that group would be really important. So I can't say I know that much about that, but I'm happy to kind of dig into that on my role on the board. Because I think I think that's essential. And that's what we see some of the challenges that have happened in the city.
So fair to say at this point, anyway, you're not cognizant of any issues or concerns or problem culturally amongst the staff at the Justice Center?
I do. I am not, no.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilwoman Fitch?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Huber, thank you for volunteering to serve. It's an important position. It's interesting that this commission was around for a long time and nobody knew it until we started having all the problems at the jails. I'm glad it's been resurrected. And I think a lot of Jeff Smith, who you've got to know probably pretty well. So I think you, among others, will make a good team over there. The person that you're replacing made a comment on the way out that she was frustrated, and that's why she was leaving because of the lack of transparency in county government and the administration. How will you handle those same issues if you face the same roadblocks that she faced?
Great question. And, you know, I don't know all of her experiences, and I know she was a great part of the committee. I think, you know, what I do is data, day in, day out, pretty much. And so I think that it's going to be important for the board to continue to ask those questions. You know, if we're concerned about culture and climate and we're concerned about people leaving, then we need to have an exit survey. Why do people leave? Ask people why they're there. And so, you know, I'm committed to this. I have been committed to the jail for quite some time, and I'm glad the sport exists. So I mean, I guess, other than tenacity and just continuing to ask questions, I think that's kind of my my goal.
Okay, I would hope that you'd be as outspoken as she was and share those experiences with us. Because if we don't hear from you all, all we hear from is the director who works and serves at the pleasure of the county executive. So really, we look at, at least I look at you as an oversight board of what's going on over there, an independent oversight board. Even though you're nominated by the county executive, we think that once we give you the approval that really, truly, we hope you would act independently over there. So.
Okay. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else with any questions? Generally, when I'm the last, most of the questions have been answered. But I did want to, I want to mention that we have a request for a proposal for a top-down review of the jail system as it stands now. We do not know, I do not know where that stands. I know that there was some resistance in getting that done, which was part of Mary's frustration in having a review done of what need of some kinds of improvements that can be made. Clearly, the culture is a problem, as many have indicated. But there has to be some kind of tool that we can use to figure out what we need to do. You mentioned the scheduling. That has been, has come up several times as a point of concern. So again, to Councilwoman Fitch's statement there, there has been conflict between us, the administration, and the facility there and not getting clear information from there as to what we can do, how we can do it, and what we what we need to do. So I think that it's going to be, and it's a lot on your shoulders, but you have others who share the same thing. But for, you know, for lack of an opportunity, I just don't think it's been said. And you also know that we have had several directors. And so that tells me that there is some issue, some underlying issue that we have not addressed. And so hopefully, this review will give us some insight into that. That was the only thing that I had to say. Did you have any questions of us or anything at this particular point?
No, I just, thank you for the questions and the insight. I think I look forward to the top-down reviewing. And will that be done quickly then?
We don't know.
Okay, well, I look forward to the reviewing.
I said, I said the proposal was put out there. And, 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 and we really, I think Councilwoman Webb is not on here, but it would be her, her committee. She chairs justice, health and welfare, and she's looking into that. And we hope that we will get some company that's not necessarily connected to someone else in county government that can give us a realistic review of what is happening there.
Okay, great. I'll look for that. I'll, I think that would be very helpful.
All right then. Any, any further questions? Dr. Hubner, thank you so very much for your time and your patience today. So thank you and you are excused.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to Mr. Ashworth. Mr. Ashworth is a potential for the Board of Police Commissioners. Mr. Ashworth, you introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about you.
Certainly. Thank you. My wife and I are long-term residents of the St. Louis County area. We are not from St. Louis. We moved here about thirty-five years ago. I am currently a principal with Edward Jones and their human capital division.
All right. So you deal a lot with human resources, I believe. Is that in terms of human capital? Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Let's open up and see if we have any questions from the council members. Councilmembers, any questions?
I'll go first. Nope, go ahead.
All right. Councilwoman Dunaway?
So why are you interested in this, this role?
Thank you for asking the question. My friends have been asking me that question for the last three weeks. What are you doing? For me, it's an opportunity. I am in the midst of transitioning out of Edward Jones. I'm retiring from them. And it's an opportunity to give back to my community, our community in a different way. I grew up at Edward Jones where we talk about making an impact in the lives of our clients and our communities. And this is just another way for me to hopefully make a positive impact in the lives of our clients and our community.
Thank you so much for your willingness to serve.
Thank you.
Councilman Fitch?
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Ashworth, thank you for your willingness to serve. Someone you work with was the chairman of the Board of Police Commissioners. Did you get to know him at all? And did you have a chance to talk with him about his experiences on the board?
I know Roland very well and yes, I have talked to him often.
And you still want to serve?
Call me a masochist. Yes, I think so.
All right. So I just do have a few questions for you. Have you had a chance to read the charter about what the responsibilities of the Board of Police Commissioners are?
I have.
So I think in my opinion, the most important line is the first one in there. The Board of Police Commissioners shall be in charge of the Department of Police. What does that mean to you?
For me, what it means is that we would work with and through the chief and the leadership team directly at times with the officers to improve the working conditions of and the direction of the police force to serve the community differently, better.
So if someone from outside of the Board of Police Commissioners, let's say, I don't know, the county executive said, you're going to do this. How do you, how would you take an order like that?
I don't know that we would take any type of order like that. I was under the impression it was supposed to be an independent governing body that didn't respond or didn't take orders from anyone, but much less the executive. I thought it was set up to be an independent organization.
I don't know if you followed much about the lawsuit with Lieutenant Colonel Troy Doyle, but part of the recordings that he released in that lawsuit was the county executive saying, "The Board of Police Commissioners will do what I tell them to do." Are you familiar with that statement?
I'm not.
Just, it's something you need to be aware of, that others may feel differently than you do about who's in charge of that police department. So I just wanted to point that out to you and make sure you were aware of that. How did you, did you approach the county executive for this appointment? How did that all work out?
I did not. Based on my understanding, a former colleague of mine referred me to the county executive about an opportunity as they looked at different ways or different skill sets they needed on the board. That colleague of mine was also a human capitalist and a business person who referred me in.
Okay. So you just reached out cold. Is that what I heard you say?
They reached out or he, my colleague reached out to me coldly. Yes.
Okay. All right. And obviously there's been a lot of controversy lately. While the police board has turned over quite a bit, as a matter of fact, Bishop Wooton, who's on this call as well, is a former commissioner. I didn't know if you knew that or not.
I did not.
So yes, he's on the call as well. So he's probably enjoying this conversation since he lived it for quite a few years. And I'm sorry to see you go, Bishop. At any rate, so what's going to happen probably in your tenure? Because you're going to fill Judge Price's unexpired term. Is that right?
That's my understanding.
So my guess is that'll be a several-year appointment. You will very likely have to be in a position at some point to pick a new police chief. The current chief has been there for just over a year. She obviously has had, I'll call it some controversial time in her one-year tenure. What is your feeling as a new board member? Do you go in and do you support what she's trying to do? Or have you made any decisions or thought processes in that arena yet?
I have not. I think I owe it to her, to, to my committee members, to my board members and myself to take an objective view of where that is. I certainly know where this committee stands on her. Obviously familiar with your no confidence vote. And I'm familiar with some of the other things that are going on through other media. But I, I think I owe it to her, to us, to the community to do an appropriate understanding of just where she is and what we are.
And if I can give you a hypothetical, let's say that's time to pick a new chief at some point during your tenure. And you're asked to go to the county executive's home and interview one of the candidates for that open position. Is that something that you think that you would take part in to interview that candidate before any selection process is announced?
Hypothetically thinking, or hypothetically speaking, and without knowing the process that's there, that would make me feel extraordinarily uncomfortable. So I would probably decline that option.
Well, just keep in mind that the current vice chair did that, that's still serving on the board. So that's something to, again, keep in your back pocket and keep in your, in your mind, that those kind of things have happened. One last thing that I have is there's been some talk about, and rightfully so, about some racial issues in the police department. Have you followed that conversation?
I have.
And what are your thoughts as a HR professional of how to address those, how to help the chief of police address those issues?
So again, I'll speak hypothetically because I don't know the specifics of this. I've certainly heard about it. As we do in any organization, as we do in a couple of three organizations that I've worked with professionally over the years. We go in to understand both what's driving that and why it's driving it and put measures in place to try to address the root cause issues. A lot of organizations want to deal with symptoms. What I've been taught is let's go for the root cause of whatever that is. And sometimes, by the way, that root cause are just human nature by general, right? We all have biases. There are inequities built into every system. There are inequalities built in any system. So there'll be some things we can address and some things that take a lot longer to change, but it would be to go to the root cause of whatever the issues are.
All right. Thank you, sir. I appreciate your candor and that's all I have, Madam Chair.
Councilman Harder?
Yes. Mr. Ashworth, you bring a pretty extensive background of personnel and human resource background with Edward Jones. What would you say is your greatest strength that you could bring to the, the police board? And, and what would you want to do, you know, say a priority issue based on what you see so far? Say three top priorities you would like to bring to the board?
Yeah. Thank you for the question. The, I think what I bring, I assume that's why they reached out to a human resource professional, is what motivates, what moves humans in a specific direction and makes us work as humans, right? What drives our motivations? So whether that's leadership and development, whether that's rewards and recognition, whether that's the training, whether that's the culture, whether, whatever that be. I assume that's why they brought me in. I believe that's what I bring as my strengths. I think the very first thing that I would do is to understand the culture of the organization by asking lots of questions, by getting out into the community and talking to officers, talking to leadership, talking to the chief, talking to some members of the community to try to understand. That would be the first thing that I would do. The second thing I've heard loudly from many, many people is this, this Teneo report. I've read it. I understand what's written. I don't understand all the context around it. So if it is accurate and that's what we should be working off of. The third thing I would do is then say, how do we enable that plan to, or that document to turn into a plan and then turn that plan into execution?
Okay, thank you. And finally, we're privileged to have Bishop Wooton on the same call. I want to ask him a question on this, if I could. Bishop, what advice would you give Miss, Mr. Ashworth about being on the police board?
Wait a minute. I need to take some notes here. Bishop Wooton, hold on. You're muted.
There we are. I would say speak truth to power. As you see a situation, speak your heart and be unbiased for situations and feel the heart of the people that you're serving. As a police commissioner, it's a responsibility to speak for the citizens and to the police force.
Thank you.
And I appreciate that guide, too.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? Councilman Tracus?
Thank you. Mr. Ashworth, your entire career has been in HR?
The vast majority. I've had some specialty roles that were outside of HR, but the vast majority of my career has been in HR.
In your career, have you been involved in the hiring and firing of employees, management and executive team?
I have many, many times.
So your experience with respect to recruitment, hiring and termination, if I understood your answer correctly, goes all the way through executive levels in corporations?
That is correct.
So is leadership an important quality with respect to the executive level at a minimum?
It's probably the second most important quality there is integrity is the most important quality.
Couldn't agree with you more. So, um, when you encounter questions and concerns with respect to leadership and integrity, are you hesitant at all with respect to making a change if it's appropriate based on a track record?
I'm not hesitant at all. The right to, incredibly to your question. I've had to do it many, many times out of my thirty-eight-year career, unfortunately. Had to do it many times.
Never pleasant. But my question now is directly, if you, after you've had enough time to acquaint yourself, come to the conclusion that a change in leadership is needed in the police department, are you prepared to make that recommendation and cast that vote?
With the ifs that you put in front of every one of those, I would say the answer is yes, certainly as part of it overall board.
Yes, of course. But I'm saying, once you, once you've had time to acclimatize yourself.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for your candor on that. And then my next question is, do you have any, I guess, what is your position with respect to the concept of police nullification?
I'm sorry, you broke. Can you say it again that you broke up on that?
Yes, sir. What is, what is your?
Tracus, we're hearing a lot of background noise somewhere. I'm not sure. So if you're not talking, can you use your device there?
Mr. Ashworth, what is your understanding of and what is your position on the concept of police nullification? If you understand what I mean.
I do not. I'm not familiar with the term.
I'll give you a definition just so that we have one to work with. And what I mean by that term is the idea that through public media, commentary and other factors such as demonstrations, what have you. The concept is that policing as it currently exists, law enforcement as it currently exists is flawed. And therefore, there should be discipline up to and including prosecution as we've seen in the city of St. Louis of police officers. The result of that is a nullification of the willingness of rank and file law enforcement to engage in policing as we customarily understand it, out of, in my opinion anyway, justified fear of unwarranted prosecution. So is that a problem as you, based on that definition? Do you see that as a potential problem with respect to trying to manage from a police board standpoint, the delivery of law enforcement to St. Louis County?
I can understand your question based on my own experience with media and colleagues and friends that I talk to, right? I can understand that. Candidly, I don't know yet, but my instincts would tell me, my professional instincts of dealing with humans is that's a likely situation, right? If you're walking into and you're constantly faced with ridicule and second guessing, no matter what you do, I can understand why people would shy away from it. It happens in the business world, too.
Yes. So would you say that at least it's a legitimate concern for the board to consider, to consider and involve itself with?
I think police morale is an absolutely legitimate concern that the board has to pay deep attention to.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. Thank you, Madam Chair. That's all I have. And thank you for your willingness to serve, Mr. Ashworth.
Thank you. Councilman Fitch?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Ashworth, just a follow-up because you mentioned the Teneo report that you had a chance to read it, which I'm glad you did get a chance to read that. There's some discussion, you've probably heard a bit about this, about the city police department and the county police department having some sort of merger of services. There's some talk about maybe nine-one-one services being merged with the city. We know about the relationship that the county has in the Jennings area with the St. Louis City Police Department. What are your thoughts or do you have any thoughts about that type of discussion going on and probably mostly behind the scenes? Have you given that any thought?
A little bit, but this is going to be more as a citizen of St. Louis, not so much as a board member. So please hear me say that. I think anything we can do to bring the city and the county together on key issues that we, our community overall faces is a, is a significant improvement. Why that, why, why wouldn't that apply to things like nine-one-one or overlapping of police opportunity, right? Someone does something in the county and runs to the city or vice versa. I, I don't know why we wouldn't draw close parallels between the two organizations and bring them much closer together.
Okay. That's all I have, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone, anyone else with any questions? Mr. Ashworth, again, thank you, but I have a couple of questions as well. The police board in, in some respects is supposed to be our civilian review board. However, many citizens don't feel a comfort level in addressing, at least they previously have done. I have not felt comfortable in addressing situations with that board. What, what is, what is your idea, first of all, of a citizen review board? Do you think the commission as it stands now is in that space and it can utilize that space to do that? So can you talk to me a little bit about that?
So I think I heard a couple of questions in there. The, the first one would be, I think a civilian review board of an organization like a police commission or a police department is absolutely necessary. I think that's pushes us as a police commission, i.e. citizens and the, the police officers much closer together. So I'm fully supportive of that. To the lack of trust, I'm going to put different words around what you said, between citizens and the board. I don't have any qualifications to answer that question. I'm disappointed to hear that, but I don't have any qualifications to understand why or what. Certainly, I would hope that if that is the case, that we can figure out a way to address not only the trust with, between the citizenry and, and the board, but between the board and the police, the police and the citizens. I hope we can build trust across all those organizations.
Okay, thank you. We did talk a little bit about the Teneo report, but you do realize that you have had, we've had the Ferguson report as well. Now we have the Teneo report. It looks like we've been reported to death. And we, we really have not, in my mind, have not attacked, attacked each one of those with some, some sincerity of addressing many of the problems that both of these reports have espoused. So you have not, did I understand, you have not read the Teneo report or you have?
I have.
You have read that. Have you read the Ferguson report?
I have not.
Okay. Well, it might be helpful because many of those things, I think it all overlap. But again, it, from my perspective, you know, yeah, we don't need another report. We absolutely need someone to move forward with action items as to how we can address many of the issues that have been reported in both of those. I will also say that hopefully your human resources background can give us some, some solid human resource practices and policies within the department. I, I believe, that's just my belief that many of the lawsuits that have come up are because we don't have, I, I think we don't have good human resource people that, that can, that are looking at these issues and seeing these issues part of whatever, you know, there is in their mind. And I think that it would be very helpful if we can get some, some kind of independent professional. You are a professional and I don't believe that person is a professional human resource person. The last thing, um, I, I, well, I think that that might be it. Okay. Anyone else with any further questions? Councilman Tracus? You're on mute.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm sorry. Just a couple of follow-ups, Mr. Ashworth, just to make sure I understood your answer. Beginning with a civilian review board, did I understand correctly? Beginning with the civilian review board, did I understand correctly, you're in favor of the creation of such a board?
I believe that's what the board is, is it not?
Right. So, that's where I was going. So, in your opinion, the police commission is, in fact, a civilian review board?
Absolutely, without hesitation.
So, can I assume from that answer that it would be unnecessary to have another civilian review board in addition to the commission?
If that's the impression I left, that was not the impression I meant to leave. It is that the current board, as it's created in the charter, is that civilian review board.
Very good. That's what I wanted to make sure I understood. And then, the other one is, and follow up to Councilman Fitch's question, with the respect of this idea of merging the city and the county police departments, I want to make sure I understood your position on that. Are you in favor of such a merger, or just exactly what is your position on?
Yeah. So, thank you for clarifying. I didn't hear Mr. Fitch's request or question as a merger. I heard him mention it as closer working relationship. Yeah, that's what I can, I would absolutely agree. It needs to be a closer working relationship. And so, whether it should be merged or not, I leave that up to the you, the city council, right? Maybe I should have an opinion, maybe I shouldn't. I don't.
But fair to say that it would be, at least, I don't want to use the word inappropriate, but let's just say it would be odd to have St. Louis County police officers be assigned to duty in the city and be under the command of the city police department and the oversight, to the extent that you could call it that, of the city prosecutor's office. You wouldn't be in favor of that, would you?
Well, I don't know that I would be in favor or not in favor, but I don't have an opinion. I would say, just my experience would say that would seem extraordinarily strange. There may be exceptions, but I don't know why that would happen, but I don't have a strong opinion on it.
Thank you very much for your candor. Appreciate it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Councilman Harder?
Yeah, one last question, and this ties into some of the other questions. We've got an overabundance of lawsuits going on right now, and a lot of them originate out of the police department and other parts of county government, but a lot of them come out of the police department for various reasons. As an HR person, how do we avoid these lawsuits in the future? And what do we do to work with the current employees to avoid these lawsuits in the future? What would you recommend?
Yeah, boy, that's the loaded question, isn't it? That's exactly what we need to do, whether it's lawsuits, or morale, or the relationship between our police officers and our community. I don't know that I have an answer that's specific to this situation. Certainly, what starts out was trust, and trust is usually built on transparency, right? There's open dialogue about what are our issues, are we solving them together? If we build transparency in between, say, the officers and themselves, the officers and the board, the officers and the community, the community and the board, I think that's where we start. But again, without being on the committee, on the board, and understanding it to a much greater detail, I'm not sure, I'm just going to be able to give you generic answers right now, Mr. Harder. I don't know yet.
Okay, that's fair. Thank you.
Thank you. Have you started serving, Mr. Ashworth, yet?
I have not been to any of the board meetings. No, ma'am.
Oh, okay. All right. I think that that was all the questions I had. Anyone else, any other committee members with questions at this point? All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Ashworth, and we appreciate your coming and giving us the 411 on your positions, and you are excused.
Thank you very much for the opportunity. Have a great weekend.
Thank you. You as well. All right. Bishop Woden? How are you this evening, sir?
Doing great. I'm off of mute now.
All right, all right. You've been around here a little while, and many of the folks here may, I don't know if they're aware or know you. So, would you give us a little bit about you, and we know you've served on the police commission board, so we do know that about you. So, would you give us a little information about you, please?
Yes. I'm a longtime resident of St. Louis County. I've been here in my home for over 48 years. I was born in St. Louis, got my BA degree from Aristow, got my master's degree from St. Louis University, my PhD degree from St. Louis University. I was an educator for 30 years. I served as a chief, principal, assistant superintendent, and I've also been a pastor for over 40 years. I'm a bishop that has a jurisdiction of over 40 churches. I'm also the third ranking in our Church of God in Christ denomination, the second assistant presiding bishop. We have over 6.5 million members in the Church of God in Christ over 110 countries. And I just leave in serving the church job, pastor, Williams Temple. It's located in the city. I could have moved to the county, but I wanted to stay right there to see where I could do the most help where the need was. And wherever I can find a need, I find myself putting my hands forth to do what I can.
Well, we are certainly hopeful that when COVID is over and we can get back to in-person, that you will make sure that you visit St. Louis and take over downtown, as you have done in the previous years. Your denomination is fantastic for our economy, okay?
Oh, yes.
All right. You've been pointing to the Housing Resources Commission. Bishop Woden, what do you see that commission is doing? What do you see the big, big, big deal about that one?
I think it's looking at people that, except for the grace of God, go aye. When this pandemic hit, a lot of people lost their jobs, they're in service industry, and could not make ends meet. And because of lack of funds, they're having trouble having housing and paying the bills. So, I think we need to reach out and not just support people, but give them a hand up that they may become, move from independence, or rather, dependence to independence.
And housing stability, do you think that that's a big part of that?
Oh, yes, yes, because so many people have trouble meeting their rent. I was talking to a lady just today. She is, the substance abuse have affected a lot of families. So, her daughter is having a problem, so she is really taking care of the granddaughter. And she's not a youngster. She sees the granddaughter off to school and sees that she get dressed and she takes care of her. But with the economy being what it is, with so many families, this pandemic has caused people to be shut in at home and not being able for the kids to go to school. And being an educator, I saw that many times, that was the only meal the kids really got, was when they would come to school. And so, this has been a trying time, this year and going into last year. So, that's the housing and the help that can be rendered, it should be temporary, moving them from dependence to independence. So, I think it is a great need, and some people have fallen in that category now that would never have been, except for what has happened.
All right. Questions for Bishop Woden? Anyone with any questions for Bishop Woden? Councilman Fitch?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Bishop, not really a question, just a comment. Welcome back to a board on St. Louis County government. I never had a chance to thank you for your service to the Board of Police Commissioners, so thank you for that. And we look forward to having you serve in this new capacity. So, thank you for stepping up.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Councilman Harder?
Yes, Bishop Woden, what do you see as your greatest strength that you can bring to this new commission, new commission position that you're seeking?
I believe in reaching out and trying to put myself in the other person's shoes and see how I can really help them to be independent and to connect them with our great county government as to their workers together, that they are part of the citizenship of the county, and that they're going to be helpful to helping others when we help them. I've had a saying that I've used, oh, I don't know, oh, 40 or 50 years, "Good, better, best. Never get it rest until your good is better, and your better is best." So, that's what we can do with people that may fall on hard times. I've talked to some people that would travel, no transportation, catch public service to get to a job, and there's certain time of the evening, the jobs, they're out there with the transportation, and it's public transportation, but they're willing to try to make a decent wage and try to end meet. So, they fall on hard times. So, whenever we can do something that will help them to do better, I think we should take that opportunity.
What do you see with this commission as their most important mission, and how do you plug yourself into that mission?
Yes, it's for, there's so many that are homeless, and that the affordable housing, and we could step in and say, let's see if we can get you somewhere you can live in a safe environment and that you can move forward. And they're critical areas. They're areas that are really suffering in North County. So, many people I hear have lost their jobs, and they're not able to pay their rent and things of that sort. So, this is where we, as taxpayers, put in our money to be a help to others as well. So, that's what we can do. This commission can look out and see where the need is and address the need, not just let people float by and say, hey, this is a helping hand. Now, you get up, you reach out to help someone else.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't have any questions. I just wanted to thank you for your willingness to serve.
Oh, thank you.
Okay. Councilman Fitch? I'm sorry. Councilman Tracus?
Yeah, blue shirts on. Maybe that's it. I don't have a question either, Bishop. I just want to say thank you for your willingness to serve. Your heart and the light shines through you, and I know you're being asked it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. And anyone else? Well, Bishop Woden, we have received quite a bit of money from the federal government in terms of rental assistance, and that money is being distributed as we speak, I'm hoping. And then, we've gotten this second part of money, which we will probably be solidifying on Tuesday's agenda. That's my hope. And hopefully, that will give you some of the resources needed to address some of the concerns that you have about folks not having sufficient or stable homes or apartments in which to live. So, hopefully, that will be helpful to you, and then that will help you in your service.
All right. Looking forward to that.
All right. Anyone else? Anyone else? All right. Well, thank you so kindly, sir, for your patience. You were the last one on the agenda, and you are excused. So, thank you so kindly.
Thank you. God bless.
All right. All right. Do we have any public comments? Diane?
Yes, Madam Chair. We have one public comment today from Megan Campbell in regards to the appointment of Dr. Faisal Khan as Director for Department of Public Health in reference to St. Louis County Animal Control. Dr. Khan made it clear at the meeting on May 7, 2021, that he is not interested in fixing current issues at ACC or hearing public concerns, turning off his camera during public comments, stating that facts matter more than opinions, and that those raising their voices are well-meaning but misinformed is not how effective Public Servants Act, blaming staff, volunteers, advocates, and citizens for being concerned about the care of animals at ACC should be a warning sign that Dr. Khan is not concerned about public opinion and has no intention to make changes anytime soon. Dr. Khan likes to fall back on, quote, "facts" as long as they support his agenda, but does not adequately elaborate on other factors that need to be considered when looking at these facts. For example, statistics he presented compare the live release rate at ACC compared to national live release rates. It is true that ACC has over a 95% live release rate, which is higher than the national average. However, this does not account for the quality of care that the animals are getting, which is extremely poor, even if they do get out alive. He did not give credit to the team dealing with animal care during 2020 responsible for these high rates, most of whom have been fired or quit due to hostile work environment. Because this team is no longer functioning, outcomes and quality has greatly declined in 2021, which he failed to mention. His rebuttal to accusations of heart-stick euthanasia, direct injection into the heart, is that the practice is approved by the American Veterinary Medical Association. Other approved methods for dog euthanasia by this governing body include deadly gas inhalation and electrocution. Even if these dogs are sedated prior to any of these methods, most would agree they are inhumane, just like the heart-stick method. Per Dr. Khan's comment regarding approval of these methods by AVMA, should we remain quiet if the contract vet decided to use electrocution as a euthanasia method instead? How many times has Dr. Khan stepped foot in ACC in the past year, walked through the kennels of dogs, heard the hostile work environment, smelled the feces, saw the medical neglect, witnessed the declining state of these animals? Madam Chair, that's all the public comments for today.
Thank you very much, Diane. Do we have any discussion from the council members? Discussion? Yes. Councilman Fitch?
I have a question for the counselor's office, if you don't mind.
Jen?
My question, Jen, is, I'm not sure how this works. So, if there's an acting director, and they come through a confirmation hearing, let's say the council votes it down, can they still stay as the acting director, or do they have to move on? How does that work?
Well, as you know, we generally don't like to give legal advice in an open meeting, but if you would like us to respond to that question for legal guidance, we're happy to prepare that for you.
Is that something that I could find in the charter that will ask, that will answer that?
I would have to get back to you on that.
It's okay to say you don't know. It's all right. It's fine. Okay, all right. Obviously, that's just a question I think I'd like to have answered before we actually vote on it.
And to make sure I understand, the question you want to know is, if someone has been named an acting director by the county executive, and the council then takes up that person's appointment and votes it down, is that person still able to act as acting director? Is that your?
That is correct. Yes, thank you.
We can try to do that question.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Councilman Harder?
Just a question on process. So, I guess these nominations will come up at the Tuesday meeting, and we will have an up or down vote on them at that time? Is that the plan?
That is correct. I think, and I may be mistaken, sometimes in these hearings, we will recommend that they be supported or not supported, and I think that we've done that before. So, if that's what you want to do or how you want to do it, I think it's left up to this council.
I think we're missing two. We're missing two people. I think we probably need to just bring it to a vote on Tuesday, so that everybody gets a say in this.
That's fine. That is fine. That is your recommendation, that we will, these are already on the agenda of the unfinished business, and we will vote on them at that time. Is that the consensus of the organization, of the group? Come on, Ernie. All right. All right, Ben. All right, and that is what we will do. So, is there any further discussion for this meeting? If not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Dunaway?
All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Thank you so much, and I appreciate your time. Those opposed, no. Thank you so much, and I appreciate your tolerance on a Friday afternoon.